Hello and welcome to the Leland County District Seven Candidate Forum hosted by the League of Women Voters in partnership with the Leland Enterprise and Traverse Area Community Media. Thank you to the enterprise for helping us get the word out about the forums and to Traverse Area Community Media for making them available for live stream and playback via the TACM website and their Facebook page. My name is Tricia Dunn and I'm the president of the League of Women Voters of Leland County. Empowering voters, defending democracy, we strive for a democracy where every person has the right, the desire, the knowledge, and the confidence to participate. The League of Women Voters is a national, nonpartisan political organization that for more than 100 years has encouraged the informed and active participation of citizens in their government. The League as an organization never endorses or opposes candidates or parties. We do make an effort to obtain factual information on ballot issues and candidates' views and share this information as widely as possible. We are very grateful to the candidates for participating in the process of informing voters through this forum. And a special thank you to our moderator, Judge Kenneth Akini, for his willingness to assist. Judge?
Thank you, Tricia. Good evening. My name is Ken Akini. I serve as the chief judge of the Grand Traverse Band of Ottawa and Chipewatt Indians. I welcome our candidates and you, the voters, to this important community forum. The purpose of this forum is to provide an opportunity for members of the community to meet the candidates, to learn about the candidates' qualifications, and to hear their views on a large range of topics. Our candidates this evening are running in the Leland County Board of Commissioners, District Seven race. Candidates are Nancy Flanagan and Melinda Lautner. Format and guidelines for tonight's forum are as follows. Questions for the forum have been submitted by the public via email prior to this forum. I have screened the questions for propriety, clarity, relevance, and duplication. Time permitting, all questions that were submitted for my review will be read to the candidates. The questions have been organized from general questions about the candidates and their experience as leaders or potential leaders, questions about the Board of Commissioners' organization and activities, and finally, specific questions on various issues. To begin, each candidate will give a two-minute prepared opening statement. Then they will respond to one question previously submitted to them. A coin toss was held with the candidates prior to the beginning of the forum to determine who would provide their opening statement first. Rotating who will speak first, the candidates will then respond to the questions that were submitted via email. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question. There will be no follow-up responses, but each candidate will be given two minutes for closing remarks once all questions have been asked or time has run short. Timing for answers begins when the candidate speaks. A display showing the left's time for the tonight's forum will remain on screen throughout the forum to help candidates monitor their remaining time. The meeting hosts will also notify participants when time has elapsed. Let us begin. To begin with the opening statements, the coin toss starts with you, Ms. Flanagan. You have two minutes for your opening statement.
Hello. My name is Nancy Flanagan, and I'd like to tell you why I'm running for District Seven County Commissioner. I have lived here in Cedar for 12 years, which kind of makes me a newcomer around here, but we've been property owners here for 35, and I have been following local politics via the Leland Enterprise for 35 years. I was a music teacher downstate for 32 years, and my area of expertise is in education policy. And when we built a home and moved here, we both had businesses. My husband had a law practice, and I had a small business as a teacher professional development specialist. And our internet was insufficient. And so I started tracking county government to figure out why this was in a county that was relatively wealthy. I started going to meetings. I started doing a lot of reading, and I saw a lot of things on the county government that I couldn't support. Here are some things that I do support and I'm in favor of: recycling, a septic ordinance to protect the watershed, keeping church and state separate in government meetings, protecting neighbors by masking and following health department recommendations, respecting county workers, early childhood programming. I saw all of those things challenged or overridden by the county commission. I am in favor of transparency, and I'm in favor of cooperation because I think we can do a better job of protecting and enhancing this beautiful place where we all live together. I love Leland, and I want to serve.
Thank you, Ms. Flanagan. Ms. Lautner, it's now your time for your opening statement.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much for the opportunity to address Leland County's residents and for the opportunity to meet Nancy for the first time. I am Melinda Lautner. I am a lifelong resident of Leland and Grand Traverse Counties. My family has been in Leland County since back when some of my great-grandparents ran the boarding house in Grellikville. That was about the time my husband's family came over here, in the mid-1860s. My husband and I are owners and operators of his family's sixth-generation farm in Solon Township. We have four children and seven grandchildren. We are fortunate, fortunate through our hard work and sacrifice that they are able to be here in the county with us. We are, we are very, very fortunate. I have been on the county commission now and have found that I really enjoy the work. It's hard work. It's not easy, but I really enjoy the, the ability of, of meeting with the people, hearing their concerns, and following the challenges of the county government. Thank you again for this opportunity tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Lautner, we'll begin with the first question with you. What are your top three priorities for Leland County?
Sure. Um, this is a very difficult thing to put down into just three priorities because we have so many. The Leland County Board of Commissioners deals with so many different issues, so many different departments. But I would have to say that I have always been of the mindset that we need to keep our taxes as low as possible. Our SEVs are so high up here, and, and they're not getting any lower. We've seen that quite recently. So we need to keep our taxes as low as possible, keep government regulation as low as possible, and stay out of the way of, of small businesses. I am going to work very hard for the completion of fiber to the home. I think that is very important for, for not only businesses to work out of their homes, but for college students and even our, even our schoolchildren that are expected to have fiber, or at least high-speed broadband. Also, to keep our seniors safe, our sheriff, being able to keep our counties safe, housing and water quality. And my time is up.
Thank you. Ms. Flanagan, it's now your turn. What are your top three priorities for Leland County?
Thanks. Um, the first one is making Leland County welcoming for young families. We're a very old county. The average age in Glen Arbor Township, for example, is 62. Think about that. Six of the top 50 counties in the country are here in northern Michigan, and one of them is us. We're old, and this is unhealthy. We need to provide a range of affordable housing, childcare options, good schools, and strong broadband. But we need to do that so that young families can come and settle here and can share in the local opportunities, agricultural, community organizations, and so on. Number two, stewardship of our natural resources. We need to protect our water. Our lakes are our economic engine. We need to make sure that we're very careful about growth. And number three, forward-thinking government. We have many challenges coming ahead, like climate migration, and we need to be out in front of those changes.
Thank you. Ms. Flanagan, the next question will go to you first. What qualities or strengths will you bring to the county board, and how will they help you do the job?
Um, for 30 years, I was a middle school band director. So at 7:45 in the morning, I had 65 eighth graders with noise makers sitting in front of me. I am not afraid of the county commission. I learned through my work tenacity, patience, and a sense of humor. I have two degrees in music and education and graduate work in education policy. I've done a lot of public speaking, a lot of public writing about current issues in education, and I've had a number of leadership roles around the state and around the country in developing education policy. But I think the sense of humor is the most important quality.
Thank you. Same question for you, Ms. Lautner. What qualities or strengths will county board, and how will they help you do the job?
Okay. I have this ability to go up to the county courthouse, deal with whatever needs to be dealt with, and do it in a way that I hope is perceived as being open-minded, as being flexible. So I like people. I have no problem sitting down with anyone and discussing any issue that they want to, to discuss. What happens quite often is someone will hear one side of an issue, but you sit down and, and once they get the full picture and begin to understand the roles that the county Board of Commissioners has with, with the department heads, with its residents, with the employees, then, then they begin to get a better understanding of why some of the decisions are being made, the ma, the way they're being made, and the things that we have to do. It is not for the faint of heart. I think a person has to be very strong, but also be compassionate, and I feel like I bring that to the county board.
Thank you. Next for you, Ms. Lautner. Please give an example of a significant challenge you have encountered in your public life that required you to agree to a compromise to resolve the challenge. How difficult was it for you to step back from your original position and agree to a compromise?
Oh, wow. Um, there would probably be many, but I guess I will use the one because it's on the front of my mind about, about the recycling. When we first proposed a recycling program in Leland County, the idea was to just go out for a millage to support it. But a problem with millages, that millages are, are designed by nature to have those who have largely in values pay more for a program that everybody's going to benefit from. So the idea was either to pay it out of the general fund or do a millage. So we, we instead worked as a compromise, all worked together and came up with the idea of the per household. So Leland County employees actually took that idea to Lansing, got legislation changed. And so we were leaders in the state on that, and we have the program where initially I did not think it would go through, and it's just a fabulous program.
Thank you. Ms. Flanagan, same question. Please give an example of a significant challenge you've encountered in your public life that required you to agree to a compromise, and how difficult was it for you to step back from your initial position to agree to a compromise?
By the way, Melinda, I think recycling is a fabulous, fabulous program, too. In the 1970s, when I started teaching, I was one of seven women band directors in the state of Michigan. And all of my colleagues were men, and of course, I wanted to be the best music teacher possible, and so I joined the local band director organization, and I was the only soprano in a room full of tenors and basses. And when I came in, they said, "We have a leadership position for you. It's secretary. You could take notes and make coffee at our meetings." And I wasn't real happy about that, but I decided to do it, and it turned out to be a good thing. I was able to serve the, the band director organization. I was able to learn from those colleagues and to move up to a state chairmanship through that.
Thank you. Next question for you, Ms. Flanagan. Please describe your community involvement in Leland County.
Okay. Um, I actually wrote this down because I didn't want to miss anything. So I'm a music director at Trinity Church in Northport. I'm on the community band board. I'm on the Northport Performing Arts Board. I lead the scholarship fund, the Don Wilcox Scholarship Fund for Leland County Student Musicians. I co-founded the Leland Flutes, and I am instrumental in developing an annual peace lecture, the Bill Belko Peace Lecture. I all, I am also a member and a co-founder of Northern Michigan United for Racial Equity. I directed two musicals, The Music Man and The Wizard of Oz. I serve meals at Safe Harbor. I volunteer in the schools. And I teach online courses in education policy and, and leadership, education policy and leadership.
Thank you. Same question for you, Ms. Lautner. Please describe your community involvement in Leland County.
Okay. Um, well, I am a member of Holy Rosary Church in Isador, which is north of Cedar. Although I attend St. Philip's Near East Church in Empire most of the time so that I can, can worship with my granddaughters who attend there. I'm a member of the Cedar Maple City Lions Club, and I'm a past president, actually the first female king lion for Cedar Maple City Lions Club. I'm very proud of my service to the Lions Club. I'm a member of Cedar Rod and Gun Club, a member of Cedar Chamber of Commerce. I am on the Leland County Planning Commission and Leland County Parks and Recreation and the Leland County Housing Action Committee. I also am a blood donor, and being five years post-cancer, I am pleased that now I can, can get back to, to donating blood again. I think that's such an important thing, and I'm a business owner.
Thank you. For you, Ms. Lautner. What is your position on the pay scale for county employees? Do you support increased stipends and cost of living increases for county employees? And what steps do you believe the Board of Commissioners should take before approving wage increases for county employees?
Okay. Well, we, we just have recently dealt with this. We have been traditionally giving very fair pay raises to our county employees. Obviously, the economy right now is, is not in a really good position, and we know that our employees and all our residents are really, really being challenged right now. So the idea came up of both a stipend and a pay raise. I supported the stipend for the county employees. They're all going to receive a $750 stipend. Along with that, there was a proposed a mid-year 3% pay raise. I did not support the 3% pay raise because we were going into negotiations right now with one of our union, one of our union groups. So I thought we should not be doing a, a percentage increase at this time. We should wait till after the negotiations. But I certainly supported the $750 stipend here. Just give them a little boost.
Thank you. Same question for you, Ms. Flanagan. What is your position on the pay scale for county employees? Do you support increased stipends and cost of living increases? And what steps do you believe the Board of Commissioners should take before approving wage increases?
Um, I do support raises, percentage raises for county workers, and also for the union groups, including the deputies. And I think it's unfortunate that they're both coming at the same time and kind of in competition with each other. But I'm of the mindset that we need really good, well-trained employees here, and that we should provide them with adequate, adequate pay.
For you, Ms. Flanagan. Leland County has one of the oldest populations in the U.S. with a median age of 54.6 years. What efforts would you make to encourage persons under the age of 55 to be active in government and to apply for county, countywide board positions?
Um, first of all, that's a really great question, and it's, it's what, one of the major things that drove me to, to sit for this office. If you are 55 or older, you should be in favor of good schools, year-round jobs that will support a family, innovative business and agriculture opportunities, and especially and always affordable housing, not workforce housing, but a chance for folks to settle here and build lives here.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Lautner, same question. What efforts would you make to encourage persons under the age of 55 to be active in government and to apply for countywide board positions?
This, I try every day to do this sort of thing. Obviously, having my children grow up in this community, my, my actual neighborhood is, is neighbors that have been here for 100 years. We've all grown up together in the same sixth generation I talked to, talked about earlier, actually played together on my lawn, the same, you know, families, six generations later. And they are active in, in every way possible that they can be, but the problem with very young people is, is they're busy. We have, most of the time, both parents are working. They're alternating their childcare back and forth. One will work mornings, one will, or evenings, one will work days so that they can get that worked out. So I encourage them in every way to apply for any board possible and start out as well if they must. If they want to start out, you know, coaching T-ball first, you know, I do everything I can. In fact, I do a lot of free babysitting to help them out so they can.
Thank you. Ms. Lautner, a large part of leadership and governance is relationship building. How would you characterize the cooperation among the Board of Commissioners, the village officers, and the township trustees? Do you believe there is need for an improvement? And if so, what would you suggest to help improve those relationships?
I think it's very important. Anytime you can get any leaders together to just sit down and, and have informal dialogue is very important. A lot of times, it's very same. I would include the road commission in that very thing. A lot of times, the very same issues that we're dealing with at the county, the townships are dealing with, or the road commission is dealing with. So it all just starts with conversation, being a good listener, having that dialogue, having that conversation, um, in helping each other out. It's very difficult to do because a lot of our township officers are still working, so they have full-time jobs. So those townships and villages that have office hours tend to want to have meetings during the day when a lot of our, our, our officials are working. So time scheduling is also hard, but a lot of those very same people do sit on some of these other organizations, and they have abilities to talk.
Thank you. Same question for you, Ms. Flanagan. How would you characterize the cooperation among the Board of Commissioners, the village officers, and the township trustees? Do you believe there is need for an improvement? And if so, what would you suggest to improve those relationships?
The cornerstone of relationship building is trust. And to have trust, you cannot have personal vendettas or last-minute surprises to the county commission agendas. There has to be transportation, transportation, transparency, and cooperation and respect among the people there. And this goes for relationships with the townships and villages because there really are no TERFs here in Leland County. A really good example of this is the Leland Pines Campground Proposal. The traffic, the pollution, the danger to the watershed, those will be shared by everyone around the lake and everyone in every township in Leland. So building trust is the first step in doing that.
Thank you. Ms. Flanagan, please describe what you believe the roles of the county sheriff and the Board of Commissioners are in county governance, and how you, as a county commissioner, could facilitate a strong and positive relationship with the sheriff's office.
Right. I have a deep respect for law enforcement that was taught to me by, by my family as a child because law enforcement officers put their lives on the line for public safety. But there is no such thing as a constitutional sheriff. The sheriff does not have control over the county. I respect our sheriff, and I respect all of the people who work with him, but I'm concerned that our sheriff attended a meeting of election deniers and stayed. We can't have game-playing around this. We need to have top-flight law enforcement practices here in the county, and we need to have our county commissioners say that, they believe that.
Thank you. Ms. Lautner, same question. Please describe what you believe the roles of the county sheriff and the Board of Commissioners are in county governance, and how you, as a commissioner, could facilitate a strong and positive relationship with the sheriff's office.
Okay. Well, Nancy, the last part of that first. I think I have a very good and strong relationship with our sheriff and our sheriff's department. I actually have been sitting on the negotiation team for a number of years, and we have really very good civil-friendly negotiations. The role is simple. We're co-employers with our sheriff for, for his deputies. So it is our, it is our job, and it has been our responsibility, and I have firmly been in favor of financially supporting our sheriff in the way that he needs to keep our communities safe. It is so important that we feel safe enough to walk around in the evenings, you know, in any one of our villages, or be, mostly just be safe in our homes. So I've always supported the sheriff. We have a great relationship. I'm very proud of our sheriff department. I saw recently a car from another county, and I was embarrassed for that county. It, it really didn't say a lot about how they feel about their sheriff department, I think.
Thank you. Ms. Lautner, next question begins with you. The issue of term limits for state legislators is on the ballot in November. If passed, a person could only serve a total of 12, 12 years. What are your thoughts on term limits for Board of Commission members? And if there were term limits, what number of years do you believe would be appropriate?
Term limits are a funny thing. We, in Michigan, put them in place a number of years ago for state legislature, and while I think everyone thought it was a really great idea to begin with, we were warned about it, and sure enough, what we have found is that we have lost so much leadership. And generally, senior representatives get board positions, or they get to, to chair different committees where they're, when they're experts in those type of committees or those sort of, those sort of issues. And there, there's such a short amount of time that before they can even get anything accomplished, they're being swept out because even six years in, one, one of the house side is too short. Elections, um, oh, I'm sorry. Is that it? Okay.
Thank you. Same question for you, Ms. Flanagan. What are your thoughts on terms, on term limits for Board of Commission members? And if there were term limits, what number do you believe would be appropriate?
Um, I do know that beginning in the I do know that beginning in the 2024 election cycle, all county commission seats in the state of Michigan will be four-year terms. So there's that. And I think that there are pros and cons. As Melinda said, we've seen that in the Michigan Legislature. And I'm agnostic about proposal one right now. I don't think it does enough to get rid of the cons of people juggling one office and another office and running for those things. And there is a question of expertise. For myself, however, I would consider the job of county commissioner an opportunity to serve the public and not a long-term career. I I do think that the moving people in and out is a good idea in the long run.
Thank you. Ms. Flanagan, beginning with you. Votes at county commissioner meetings seem to have been along party lines. How can you assure all of your potential constituents that you will represent all residents in your district and not just those who are members of your party? Would you support a nonpartisan ballot for the Board of Commissioners? Why or why not?
I would absolutely support nonpartisan county commission offices like school boards and judges. It's important work. And we've seen here in Leland County what happens when the board becomes very partisan. We've had how many, four, three votes? And it's a it's a it's hard to work together when you're trying to win all the time and you're trying to make your side. We need people who can swing across that line and reach across the aisle to get things done. So yes, I would be strongly in favor of nonpartisan races for county commission.
Ms. Lautner, same question. How can you assure all of your potential constituents that you will represent all residents in the district, not just those who are members of your party? And would you support a nonpartisan ballot? Why or why not?
All right, I'll try to fit it in. Actually, I always welcome any telephone calls. I mean, the grocery store gets stopped. I will always take that conversation. Surprisingly, most of our votes have not been by party line. That's been the most interesting thing to me and has also been one of those things that that's just been a talking point that's put out there. We have actually very few votes that have been along the party line. I feel like we've worked very well together in the last few years. We get along, we get, we sometimes vote the same way on. It's been surprising. I will say that. Some of the votes have been very surprising. Whether it's a partisan ballot or not, it really doesn't matter to me. I think a person has to run on their principles and their values and they have to stick to them and be open to to their residents and constituents.
Thank you. Ms. Lautner, what do you believe to be the role of the Board of Commissioners regarding affordable housing?
It is not technically one of the roles of the Board of Commissioners. However, we have taken up many different avenues in trying to help with that situation to get housing sustainable in Leland County. One of the first things we can do and we've always done is try to keep the taxes low enough so that taxes aren't a burden to our young families moving in or or just someone needing an affordable home, keeping our elderly people in their home by not taxing them out of their homes. We've done, we've worked with townships to get smaller lot sizes within the township. So we've been working with them on zoning. That helps. We're working on the possibility of getting accessory dwelling units in Leland County. That would be a big, big plus. We have, we support Habitat for Humanity. We have a partnership with Housing North to do some of those things. And all told, all combined, we attend housing summits. And I sit on the Housing Action Committee to try to solve some of these things.
Thank you, Ms. Flanagan. Same question for you. What do you believe to be the role of the Board of Commissioners regarding affordable housing?
I think the Board of Commissioners needs to be cheerleaders and spokespersons for affordable housing here in Leland County. I'm glad to hear that you're partnering partnering with some of the most expert people. There are lots of people working on this initiative and lots of expertise. In addition to Housing North and Habitat for Humanity, there's the Brownfield Redevelopment, the Land Bank Peninsula Housing and so on. And all of those are their ideas are worth examining. We need rentals. We need purchases. We need accessory dwelling units. And we don't need to be bought off by the idea that we're providing workforce housing, temporary, short-term workforce housing. We need to put our focus on long-term housing, people who want to settle here and live here.
Thank you. Ms. Flanagan, currently, the state of Michigan has a significant lack of appropriate out-of-home placements for juveniles within the court system. These placements could be foster home placements, treatment facilities, or detention facilities. What options might you consider in your role as county commissioner?
What options for juvenile placements?
Yeah, within the county.
Within the county. I haven't given that a lot of thought. I'm not, I'm not certain. I would need to to do some research and study on that question. I can see what's where it's a really important question. But I I'm not certain right now. And I shouldn't give an answer when I don't know what I'm talking about.
Thank you, Ms. Flanagan. Ms. Lautner, same question to you. What options might you consider for juvenile placements in your role as a county commissioner?
Well, this issue is more important than ever since the state of Michigan has lowered the, I'm going to say it wrong, I'm sure. But basically, the number down to 17-year-olds now are now considered juveniles instead of adults. So this created a big burden on our on our our county and our state. I don't necessarily think it has to be within our county. But I do think our county needs to work with other counties, maybe a 10-region or 11 or 10-county or 11-county so within this region to create one facility because of the cost of what it takes to 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 run and operate one of these detention centers is is absolutely enormous. It's it's like four, four or five inches thick of paperwork that you've got to do or rules that you have to follow. So I think that to make it affordable, we're going to have to do something regionally.
Thank you. We're coming now to the close of today's forum. We will now begin with the closing statements to remind the candidates. You do have two minutes for for the closing statements. And we will begin with you, Ms. Lautner.
Certainly. Well, I would like to say to anyone listening tonight that I would like an opportunity to serve Leland County for two more years and more specifically Solon and and Casson Townships. You have a lot in common in my in my townships with what we do. And and it is such a great place to live. So I would like to help continue to keep keep Leland County just a great place to live and work and play. I have the work ethic, the experience and the commitment to do that. I have a career in agriculture, so I am not afraid of hard work. And I have a dedication to service to community. I think that's a great balance. I would like to thank everybody tonight who helped put this forum on.
Thank you, Ms. Flanagan. You now have your opportunity, two minutes for your closing statement.
Thank you. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters and the Enterprise for providing this important forum. I'd like to thank my family and my friends for their support in this campaign, my very first. And especially the three other people who ran in the primary with me. Thanks, friends. I'd like to thank Melinda Lautner for 26 years of service. And I'd like to repeat my statement that I see the job of county commissioner as a chance for public service, not a long-term career. I urge all of us to think forward. There are changes coming to Leland County whether we want them or not. We need to get out ahead of those changes. We need to keep what we love and embrace the future. I ask for your vote to do just that. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks to both of the candidates who participated in tonight's forum. And again, thank you to Traverse Area Community Media, the Leland Enterprise, and the League of Women Voters, Leland County, for making this forum possible. We thank you for taking the time to listen and learn about your candidates this evening. Tricia.
Thank you, Judge Akini. The forums wouldn't have been possible without your serving as our moderator. And to the candidates again for being willing to sit in the hot seat so that the voters can get to know you a little bit better. Those who can't come out to in-person forums for whatever reason, childcare work. Thank you for making yourselves available. I want to remind everyone that to check out vote411.org for more information on the candidates running for office, both locally, state, and nationally. Those print versions of Vote 411 will be coming out in the next week or two and available in public libraries and other stores and shops and places around the community. The League also plans to do an insert in the Leland Enterprise for local candidates the week of October 3rd. So watch for that. If you prefer to do your research online, you can check out vote411.org online for information on proposals that will appear on your ballot and other need-to-know information about the voting process, such as, how do I get an AP ballot? Where can I, where and how can I register to vote? Check out Vote 411. Make sure you have a plan for voting. And whether you use an absentee voter ballot or cast your vote in person, remember to vote in the November 8th general election. A recording of this program will be available at l w v leland.org under our video links and also rebroadcast by Traverse Area Community Media and available for playback on their Facebook page. Thank you all again for participating.